Position.
Where?
Extra. Okay, so six.
Hi, I'd like to welcome everyone to the October second Newmarket Town Council meeting and we will start as always with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on our agenda is public forum and seeing that there is no public in the room, I will close public forum at seven oh one. And then next, oh, and actually let me just mention that councillor Burns is excused this evening, she's way on business. The next item that we have on the agenda is the public hearing and that is for resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash oh three, accepting a report on proposed charter amendments. So I will open the public hearing at seven oh one.
Yeah, I'll do the quick presentation for the people at home.
Okay. Great.
First, the earlier this year, the then town council chair and the then town vice chair of the council who is now chair, and I met and discussed some potential small charter amendments, these mainly clarify some idols and the roles of individuals. The town council appointed a subcommittee to review the charter, the government operations committee, and submitted a report to the town council on the recommended changes. And the following of the proposed amendments, I'm not gonna read all word for word, we put them on the website so you can read the actual verbiage, but I'll just go over them as summary. The next, the first is section amending, adding section one point five school district. This amendment memorializes that the town and school districts' efforts to share services, it was taken from the City of Lebanon New Hampshire's charter, basically allows the town administrator to negotiate voluntary agreements as approved by the town council of the school district. Section three point two is oaths of office and organizational meetings. This would change the date of the swearing in of the council from the first Monday following the second Tuesday in March to the first Monday in April following their election. And at the first regular meeting following that, the council shall adopt its rules and choose its officers. Currently, it's confusing about when that actually happens. First of all, well, not confusing because it's three days out, it's a week after the election you're sworn in at new councillors. This would give it a month to at least have some time to get up to speed and meet with staff and have some initiation into the process. And also it clarifies on when they'll adopt the rules as well as appoint the new chairs, it's not the same session as being the swearing in. Section four point one changes the title of town administrator to town manager. Currently, the position of town administrator in Newmarket has all the authority of the town manager, section four point six of the charter, plus some authority of the city managers. However, the title town administrator is confusing. In non-charter towns, the town administrator does not have the same authority as a town manager. Only the authority that select boards give the positions. You could be anywhere from a administrative, truly administrative assistant to the select board to a town manager's authority, but it's only depending on what the board allows it. To by changing the title, to reflect the actual position, it would clarify the chief executive's authority and duties. In addition, which I'm not, this isn't happening, if the position were to ever become vacant, it's actually more enticing to candidates to be hired as a town manager than a town administrator due to that confusion on the authority on the law. Next is powers and duties of town administrator. Currently, the charter states that the town administrator has no authority over elections, to supervise elections if the town clerk is the chief elections officer. That's not consistent with state law, the town moderated by state law is the chief elections officer. This, section five point two for budget procedure, we run into this just more of a question is what happens if the town council fails to adopt a budget by November fifteenth and send it on to the town, the budget committee? Under city charters, if the city council or board of aldermen do not adopt the chief executives, the city manager or mayor, budget by a date certain, the executive budget becomes law. We don't have a provision in the charter if the council does not opt adopt a budget prior to the required date of submission to the municipal budget committee. This would have just have the town administrator's budget be forwarded on if it's not accepted. By law though, the municipal budget committee, if they don't approve it, that has to go on, the council's budget would go on. The budget hearing, section five point three, it changes it from twenty, at least twenty-five days before the first session of the annual meeting to honor before the third Tuesday in January. When the town charter was amended to follow procedures of official ballot law for budget adoption, it didn't amend the date and time for holding the budget, public hearing, this just reflects that change and lines it up with the rest of the law. Five point seven, the capital improvement plan, it just clarifies whose budget that the CIP must be presented by and allows for the administrator to submit it as part of their budget. Currently, it doesn't state, it just says the final date of submission for the budget, doesn't say whose budget. So it is just saying it has to be in by the mayor's budgets of the council, so October fifteenth. Eleven point three is terms of office. This changes that any elected official will now be sworn in on the first, in April, following their appointment or election on the first Monday. So it gives them a month to also have some transition time. And that any appointed committees also would begin on the first Monday in April. So you can have at least some time between the election and that. And those are the proposed charter amendments.
Thank you. So we'll have the opportunity to ask questions once we accept the resolution. So for now, I'm going to close the public hearing at seven oh seven. And next on the agenda is for the council to consider acceptance of minutes, so I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of September eighteenth twenty nineteen.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September eighteenth twenty nineteen.
Second.
Any question? You hit, okay.
Trying to find my button, sorry.
Counselor Cast, go ahead.
On line one oh two, it says that the, it says donation, should be application. And then on one oh eight, I just wanted to maybe do a clarification there in the interest of anyone reading the minutes at a future date or hadn't watched the meeting. Maybe we want to say that they is the town council.
Oh.
Just to make that clear for, so somebody doesn't have to wonder who are they talking about.
Thank you. Any other changes or questions? If you can call the roll, please.
Councill Finch.
Aye.
Councill Sanders.
Aye.
Councill Dumont.
Aye.
Councill Kiper.
Aye.
Councill Cast.
Aye.
Councill Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
And so next on the agenda is the town administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on my report is that I'm pleased to announce that I've been approached, I have the town partnered with students from UNH in AECM, a local architecture and engineering firm, on two capstone projects. A capstone is a multi-layered assignment that students do at the end of their academic career. While similar in some ways to a college thesis, capstone projects may take a wide variety of form, but are mostly long-term investigative projects to culminate in a final product, presentation or performance. This will take two semesters to do this. The two projects are as follows, one, the Newmarket waterfront improvements. To produce a feasibility study on boat rehabilitation, seawall repair, public access enhancement, and other items to the waterfront. And the other is a Durham to Newmarket recreational trail study. It would be studying prepared pedestrian bicycle trail from Durham to Newmarket. Presented their capstone projects to the report and just received their actual reports over the weekend and did not have a chance given to you guys yet on that. But I will be entering to agreement with these, for these two projects. It should be minimal cost to the town, but having engineers students from UNH study it for us. The next is, on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, the New Hampshire House and Senate approved a compromise budget for next biennium. Newmarket stands to receive an additional four hundred twenty thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars in aid from the state. Of this, the town will receive a hundred ninety-five thousand seventy-six dollars of the aid and the remaining will go to the school. I want to give an update on the Bay Road, Liverland Creek things. It is our goal, we, there have been a number of delays due to the manufacturing of a new culvert. The culvert where it's being constructed has been pushed back due to they're busy on their end. We should have the crane being installed shortly and their goal is to have Bay Road reopened by October eighteenth. We know that we said October, but end of September, but we just got pushed, they couldn't do anything if you didn't have the culvert constructed. Again, I want to remind people that that is a active construction site and you should not, they should not be trespassing in that area for their own safety during this time. Finally, I'm sad to announce that Irene Garland, the last recipient of the Boston post campaign has passed away. After doing research, Teresa Bovair with Two Mount Pleasant Street, at ninety-eight years old, is the oldest living resident in Newmarket and the most qualified to receive the Boston post campaign. And she's agreed to accept it, we will be scheduling a small ceremony at a later date. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Cast.
I had a couple of questions, but I can do one at a time if anyone else wants to chime in. On the capstone projects, I was just curious about the wreck trail, has any possible route been?
No, that's what they're gonna.
That's part, the study will be to figure out a route for that.
Yeah, we, that's not even on our radar, they came up with the project.
Oh, okay. All right, so we don't really have any details.
Yeah. Nope.
All right.
Is that all?
Uh, yeah, actually, yes, thank you.
Councill Dumont.
For the town administrator, at this point, is he just waiting for the installation of the culvert, is everything else completed on the project?
Yeah.
Up to where we can?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Sanders.
I just had a quick question about the funds that came to, are coming to us from the budget, is that similar to the amounts we thought we were going to receive?
That's above and beyond what we thought we were going to receive.
Okay, great.
And then I just have a quick question about the capstone projects. So will they have the, or will we have the opportunity to interact with the students and?
The goal is, as you know, on the agenda tonight is a resolution to appoint a waterfront advisory committee. My sense would be that committee would work with the students. I didn't need to, I need to hear a little bit more about the Durham one to Newmarket because that may have to be a larger committee of both communities. So I need to talk to my colleague in Durham to find out.
Great. All right, so moving on, oh, sorry, Councillor Kuiper.
Just a quick question, have you ever worked with them on anything like this before, the capstone project?
I have, no.
And do you think that whatever they end up with will be like of the quality that it's usable in the engineering?
Yeah, absolutely, because I think that's what the architectural firm is also involved in.
Okay, so that's working with, okay, cool.
Yeah.
And I would say that we've worked with UNH on other projects, with students, I know, gosh.
The road study.
The road study.
Yeah.
That was quite a long time ago. Although they did the second road study too, did they?
They did, they did the update a couple of years ago because they were trying, we were actually a test for new software for theirs.
Yeah. Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Councill Dumont.
Yes, for the town administrator, forgive my ignorance, councillor Kuiper kind of brought this into my mind. In working with UNH students, do we get a project framework of what they think would be good for the town and then it's up to the town to decide if we want to initiate and move forward with that? Is their role designed consulting and creating something tangible that then we can go act on? Or where does their input come from and where does it end at that point? You know what I'm saying?
No, sorry.
So, I guess, let's say a project, we'll just look at the Durham to Newmarket recreation trail. Is their job to map out what a good trail would be, go over costs, timelines related?
Exactly.
We have to make a decision as to whether or not we want to move forward with that or?
We don't have to move forward with any project.
Okay.
It's just they're doing this as a, as a study for their, on their side.
Okay. Just something we can use, we don't necessarily have to.
Exactly.
Okay. I've not seen one of these before, so.
Yeah.
And just as an example, the original road study, we didn't really use.
No.
So.
Okay.
The second one we did.
Yeah.
You know, so I guess that'll probably depend. Councillor Cast.
Going back to the funds that we're gonna get from the state, I'm glad to hear that it exceeds what we thought it would be. How does it compare with what we've received in the past that the state stopped providing?
Oh, not even close.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still not getting our retirement funds, we're still not getting our full room and meals tax, we're still not getting our revenue sharing that we're promised. Yeah, not even close.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Kuiper.
Sorry, just to follow up on that last point, is that from, was that oh eight when they stopped paying the full rooms and meals? Or like it was?
It was during the great, yeah, it was during the great recession that they stopped doing that. And also they eliminated all the, part of the deal is we're in the state retirement system
Yeah.
because they're supposed to cover a percentage of the police and fire. They do not.
And haven't since oh eight?
And haven't since oh eight.
Okay.
About the same time, so back in the late sixties, early seventies, we had a whole hodgepodge of different taxes. And the governor at the time wanted to make it easier. And then Attorney General Redmond, who later became senator, stated that, look, the state would never go back on their promise of giving the revenue sharing because we lost tax revenue that we could no longer get. And Governors Lynch and Hassan cut it and reduced and zeroed it out during the great recession, it's never come back. So, you know, Governor Sununu hasn't returned it even though we're in better economic times either. So, that's.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, moving on, we, next on the agenda is committee reports, so are there any committee reports? Councill Finch.
Not so much a full report, but the Conservation Commission is still accepting submissions for the photo exhibition at the Stone Church. And the update on that is that it will now be taking place the entire month of November. So instead of October nineteenth being the start date, it will be November first to December first. We've had a lot of great submissions so far and a couple of residents have mentioned how it was a good opportunity for them to get out and discover some of our new land. So keep the photos coming in and again, it's gonna start on November first and we'll be accepting submissions through November first.
Thank you. Any others? I will mention that the Energy and Environment Committee had the presentation from Revision Energy last night. And we had about a little over twenty people come to the presentation. It was really well done, the conversation, the presentation was all about having a renewable home and using solar. And using solar to power your hot water and electric car and battery storage. And it was really, I thought, very interesting and I look forward to calling the representative from Revision and talking about whether or not it's an option for my home. So it was a, it was a nice presentation. And Don Sanders put the whole presentation, he was the organizer, he's on the Energy and Environment Committee, so I just wanted to make sure that I said publicly, said thank you to him for putting that all together. And that's all I have. So seeing no other committee reports, we are on to old business and we have, I would accept a recommendation to approve resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash oh three, accepting a report on proposed charter amendments.
I, let's see, what's the wording? I make a motion, sorry. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash oh three, accepting the report of the Government Operations Committee on Proposed Charter Amendments.
Second.
Thank you. So we've already had the presentation from the town administrator. So this would be the time to, you know, ask any questions or make any comments. So, um, I had a couple. Seeing no others, um, sorry, I'm just opening my. Let's see, so one of my questions, I had a couple, these are really small detail questions. Because I am in favor of all of these amendments, so these are just really super minor. But for amendment two, just to get a little clarification and just make sure that I guess everyone understands the timeline. So for instance, in the next, for the next election in twenty twenty, April first is actually the first, is the meeting, is the first town council meeting.
So you would not.
So it would be the next Monday.
Right, in April twenty twenty, you would be, whoever's being sworn in on the council would still be sworn in on the following Monday. These would not take effect until the following day.
Oh, right, oh, so it wouldn't take.
Correct.
Oh.
Every, the election one wouldn't take effect till the next one.
Oh, I didn't even think of that.
But everything else takes effect immediately.
Okay, all right, that's good to know.
Yeah.
And you had mentioned getting up to speed, you know, like using that time for councillors to get up to, the new councillors that are elected to get up to speed. And I wondered if there was any thought put into what that would look like, if there would be anything specific? And obviously that wouldn't be a chart, that wouldn't be part of the charter, but some procedures or policies that would be in effect.
So my experience, both formerly serving as a councillor and as a city, and seeing other cities how they do it, is it's actually, it's a formal, like a day-long class for the new councillors to learn everything and then even take the tours of the facility on that one day. And so they're up to speed there and also gives them a chance to attend at least two meetings, which doesn't usually happen, it just, you jump right in. So we'd encourage that as well. As everybody knows, once we know you're filed for office, we provide you with background information that we can, that's public until such a time, you still couldn't get non-public information at this time. But it just gives more time for them to read and ask questions.
Great, Councill Finch.
I guess the only question I just had was in terms of procedures, in twenty fifteen was the charter commission, right?
Thirteen.
It was the twenty thirteen.
Yeah.
So I guess that's kind of the more in-depth overhaul and then these proposed amendments would be for twenty twenty. So is there some, somewhere that's codified or is it kind of just at will that these changes get made, I guess?
Well, it's two ways. A lot of communities in New Hampshire that have charters have an automatic provision in there. It says every ten years, the council should take up a vote to whether or not to form a charter commission. A charter commission reviews a complete revision of the charter, which would go to everything from abolishing the town council, abolishing town meeting, going to a city, those kind of items. Amendments are what we have here, just small, really nothing that's gonna change the form of government, just change it, add some things and changes it. The charter commission didn't put in the provision that every ten, I don't know, I don't remember why, I remember we discussed it.
It's not in there?
It's not. I'm pretty sure, I'll double check, but.
Well, I guess the only reason I mentioned that is it just seems like a good idea and the fact that we've done some refinements.
Yeah.
I didn't know if, with how councils can have turnover and stuff, it might just be good to codify that some way, a provision to even just bring it up.
Yeah. And then when you have a charter commission though, you also have to have a separate election because you have to elect the commissioners separately, they have to have a certain amount of time to do it and it goes on the next municipal ballot, it's quite a process.
And the other communities that have provisions, it's just to at least mention it once every ten years to see if there's an interest or desire?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I had another question, um, let's see. For amendment in section five seven, it should say manager and not administrator.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question.
It's gonna be throughout.
We're trying to figure out what do we put in because it's not, if that one doesn't pass, because these are all separate questions.
Right. Mm-huh. Oh.
So if one, if it doesn't pass, then the wording stays as administrator. If it passes, then everything gets changed.
Okay.
Huh, that's noted at the bottom of four dot one.
Yeah.
Sort, it's alluded to, right?
John, yeah, the town attorney's gonna check with the Secretary of State. Process wise now is as soon as you approve this, the attorney would then turn it over to the town clerk. So they work together and the clerk then must send it to the Department of Revenue and Administration, the Attorney General's office and Secretary of State's office for review and approval. They have, I believe, forty-five days to do so. And if they don't, then it's approved out of hand, so.
And then my only other question was the November fifteenth date for the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is that prescribed by state law?
Nope, it's the charter. You must present a budget to the, the council has, I have to present a budget to the council by October fifteenth.
Right.
The council then has to adopt a budget by November fifteenth. The question, what happened, the reason what's clarifying is what happens if they don't?
And was it examined at all if that November fifteenth date is the best date for the, you know, for the administration of the town?
It's, I mean, the problem is if you deal, if you move it, you also have to look at moving the date of the election.
Yeah.
Because it falls enough days for the town, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yep, there you go, then that answers the question.
Yeah.
And then my only other question is for the committee. And that is when we, when we formed the committee, it was to look not just at the charter but also at ordinances? And I wondered if that had, if you guys had taken a gander? Okay, is that on the, on the docket?
I can speak to that.
Sure.
We, at the time, didn't have any ordinances of significant concern that we thought. Uh, we, at the time, didn't have any ordinances of significant concern that we thought needed immediate revision or, um, to be addressed. It was agreed by the committee that if we found items that we thought were, should be considered, we'd bring them together as a group so we could, you know, go through them one at a time as opposed to having a standing meeting or related. So, as items are brought to us, we can re- reconvene, but there was nothing immediately to address.
Okay.
And for ordinances, that's a simpler process to tweak?
Yeah, council just, uh, after public hearing, votes them up or down.
And seeing no other, um, comments, if you could call the rule, please.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Sanders.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Kuiper.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes to, um, six zero. And just for clarification, that, um, the charter states that the, the prepare, the, excuse me, prepare revision codification of the ordinances of the town, which are appropriate for continuation of local laws of the town. At, and at least every ten years perform a comprehensive review of codification. It's not the charter, it's the ordinances. So.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, thank you to the committee for your work on that. I think that was a, that was a big undertaking.
Well, thanks to Steve and his staff for preparing it. And, and the, uh, the town attorney for reviewing it.
So, next on the agenda, we have, um, resolutions in the first reading. And the first one is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash oh four, purchase of a twenty nineteen Ford F five fifty four by four Type One ambulance, whereas the fire department needs to replace its two thousand and nine Ford E four fifty Type One ambulance. And whereas the department obtained quotes for a twenty nineteen Ford F five fifty four by four Type One ambulance from three different vendors, with PVC being the lowest proposal, including trade-in of the two thousand and nine Ford E four fifty Type One ambulance, for the sum of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and three dollars. Whereas the ambulance revolving fund has a balance of two hundred and three thousand seven hundred and nine dollars as of September twenty fifth, twenty nineteen. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town administrator is authorized to purchase a twenty nineteen Ford F five fifty four by four Type One ambulance from the ambulance revolving fund and enter into any related contracts with PVC for a price not to exceed one hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred and three dollars. First reading, October second, twenty nineteen. Councilor Dumont?
Just a quick question, uh, for, uh, the Chair of the Town Administrator. I know, um, we see it with the police line vehicles, that they come every year to get a new one every year. Um, I take it, um, 'cause this is the first time I can really think of that we've seen one for an ambulance. Does the fire department have a similar type of style for rotating out their ambulances, just a greater time scale, or?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I think it would be helpful to get that scheduled.
Yep.
Um, the next item is, um, Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash oh five, creating an ad hoc riverfront advisory committee. Whereas the Newmarket Town Council has set as one of its goals to improve access to the Lamprey River waterfront. And whereas the town has been notified of a University of New Hampshire capstone project to study waterfront access. And whereas the town council wishes to create a committee to review and make recommendations on potential projects. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby create an ad hoc committee to be named the Riverfront Advisory Committee, to be made up as follows. One member of the town council, one member of the Conservation Commission, three members of the general public. Let it further be resolved that this committee shall expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. First reading, October second, twenty nineteen. And? Any correspondence to the town council?
Yeah.
Um, any closing comments by town counselors? Uh, Councilor Kuiper.
Um, I was wondering if, uh, the town administrator could look into some radar-controlled, um, speed limit signs? A couple of towns nearby have got them. There's one on Bald Hill Road in New Fields. I thought maybe one coming into town from either end might help to slow down traffic a little bit because even, um, with everything that's been done for the, uh, pedestrian safety, it's still sometimes people speeding down there. Someone who walks through town multiple times a day.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilor Cast.
Uh, I just want to announce ag- one more time, uh, that this coming Monday, uh, Councilor Saunders and I will be participating in the, um, I think it's the second, second, uh, conversation with the counselors program. And it's gonna be held at the loft, and I've had a couple of questions about where the loft is, 'cause it is a fairly new business. It's located at one twenty-five Main Street, which is the, uh, Rivermore Landing Building. That's the brick mill building downtown. And the loft is located in the commercial units, which are, you have to kind of go down, uh, below Main Street. It's, it's lower than Main Street, uh, on that side of the road, and they're located in the units down below. And there is parking down below for the public, for those commercial units, if, um, if you're not walking. It's at six thirty, and, uh, again, that's this coming Monday.
Thank you. Councilor, uh, Sanders?
I just wanted to remind people that, um, school buses have rules about how you can pass them or not pass them when their lights are flashing and the stop signs are out. Um, and please just be aware that the, the kids wait for the bus driver usually to give them the thumbs up, but be aware some kinds of kids dart, so please mindful of, of stopping for those school buses. It may take an extra minute, but please be aware of the kids.
Um, and then I just wanted to mention just a couple of things. We had our joint school board town council meeting last week. Losing track of time. And, um, I thought that it was a, uh, a great meeting. It was really, uh, wonderful for us to have the opportunity to, to tour both of the facilities. I haven't been in either of those, I haven't been in the elementary school since my kids were in the elementary school and, and I haven't seen, you know, any of the, the new construction. So, it was a great opportunity to, um, connect with the school board and to, uh, talk about some of our, our shared concerns. So, and thank you to the, um, town administrator for preparing presentations for that. And, uh, I thought that it was, I thought it, it's just a beneficial exercise and, um, and more than exercise, uh, you know, I think that's, um, doesn't quite, uh, explain what it is. I, I, it's, I don't mean to be, um, dismissive at all, like, it's, I think it's a really, a nice opportunity for both boards to get together and talk about some of our, our shared, uh, values and concerns for the town, so. Um, and then, uh, just a couple other dates that I wanted to mention. October nineteenth is the Fall Craft Fair at the Sunrise Sunset Center. Um, and October twenty-sixth is our budget meeting for the council, and that starts at nine o'clock. And Councilor Kuiper.
Um, I just wanted to thank the CIP Committee for, um, their work last week and this week. Uh, somewhat arduous task, but necessary, and, uh, I wanna thank all of them.
Does that, oh, it, it, there's like a little delay, so I knew that you were pressing the button. Council Cast.
I didn't know if Council Finch had something, so, okay. Uh, I attended the ribbon cutting at the Stone Church's, um, solar, new solar array. And, uh, it was well attended. There were gover- uh, you know, representation from the town. Um, also, uh, uh, gosh, who else was there? I'm trying to remember. There was the federal, federal agency, uh, that had helped with that, Banker Savings, which had helped fund it, um.
Senator Shaheen.
It's, I guess, oh my gosh, yes, Senator Shaheen. Uh, and of course, uh, uh, what's the name of the energy company that helped?
Revision.
Revision, yeah, I was gonna say the wrong name. Uh, Revision Energy, uh.
And Representative Cahill.
Yes, yeah, and messages from other, other New Hampshire, or, or, um, other representatives. So, it was well attended. I think it was received enthusiastically. It was a beautiful day and a very happy occasion. And I, I hope, uh, folks attending it or who have heard about it are excited. It is the second commercial. Not the first, uh, but that's okay. Two, two is better than one and maybe we'll be getting three, four, five, so.
And along those lines, just to add, um, one of the things that came up, I, I think it, it was mentioned at that event, but it was definitely mentioned last night, that, um, obviously the town has installed the EV charger at the library. There's one going in, um, at the Mills for residents there. And it, I, Mike Hoffman might have gotten roped in last night, but, um, the Revision Energy representative did announce that there will be one at the Stone Church also. So, uh, hopefully Mike was aware that that was happening. So, it's nice to see those, um, being installed and, and it's the, it's the future, so. Seeing no other buttons at this point, um, then we are adjourned. Thank you.